Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Geneva's City Council Chamber for tonight's special city council meeting. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Here.
Burghardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Caven?
Here.
Kilberg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Alderman Gabe Caven to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a statement to make prior to jumping into the business this evening, and I ask for your indulgence. Following this statement, I will ask the council for any questions related thereto, and then we will commence these deliberations. As all of you know, we have one item on tonight's agenda, and that item is to consider ordinance number 2022-33, amending the BlackBerry Plan unit development and approving a special use for a wireless communication facility at 1800 West State Street. The petitioner is Tower North Development LLC. For background purposes, this matter has received a full public hearing on July 14, 2022, before the city's Planning and Zoning Commission, and pursuant to the city's regulatory review and approval processes, is now before this council for deliberation and a final vote. The public hearing before our Planning and Zoning Commission was the opportunity for a full vetting of the petitioner's plans and requests, because our Planning and Zoning Commission is duty-bound to take evidence, undertake questioning, and otherwise conduct a full evidentiary hearing of the items with full public participation. Again, that public hearing was concluded on July 14 after approximately three and a half hours of testimony and questioning. Consequently, the official public hearing process is concluded, and the record adduced has been preserved for tonight's special city council meeting. This council has reviewed the record, referenced, and must... Why do I feel like I'm at Yankee Stadium here? You got that muted? The council has reviewed the record referenced and must now address the petitioner's requested action items, based solely on the record as it exists. No new information or testimony may be considered. So I respectfully remind everyone present this evening that while we invite citizens to provide public comment on this matter, any comments provided will not be and cannot be added to the already closed public hearing evidence established before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And tonight's proceedings do not allow for the back and forth of questions and answers. Put another way, there is no cross-examination allowed by residents of the council members, professional staff, or the petitioner and their agents. However, the city council may ask the petitioner or staff for clarification on any of the information that was presented during that public hearing. To reiterate, the public hearing process is complete, and all evidence has been received and all necessary testimony is concluded. If anyone this evening wishes to comment about the item we're addressing, I and the city council respectfully request that your comments be germane, brief, and perhaps most importantly, avoid repeating what has already been said by a prior speaker. You have no doubt noticed that there is no sign-in sheet this evening to speak. I will simply identify interested individuals by asking for a show of hands. We will begin identifying speakers on the south side of the council chamber and continuing in a clockwise motion to the north side of the chamber. You will be afforded the opportunity to speak only once; you will not be recognized a second time. With the utmost respect, I ask that anyone who does wish to speak, please direct your comments to me and only me. Lastly, and on a personal note, we know that sometimes people get a little nervous speaking in public, let alone knowing that, on the off-chance you don't, these proceedings are being broadcast live via AT&amp;T, Comcast, and Metronet, as well as the city's internet page. So prior to joining us at the podium, just please relax, take a deep breath, and then I will ask you to share with us your name, and then the floor will be yours. Now, if there are any questions from any member of the city council, please advise now. I will do my best to answer those or defer to our city attorney. Any questions? It's now my pleasure to ask one of the members of the council to offer a motion to consider ordinance number 2022-33, amending the BlackBerry Plan unit development and approving a special use for a wireless communication facility at 1800 West State Street, the petitioner being Tower North Development LLC. Is there a motion? Mr. Marx makes that motion? Mr. Caven makes that second. Ladies and gentlemen, we will have a brief presentation by our friends via Tower North LLC, and then following those questions, I will ask a question of the council with regard to proceeding thereafter.
Well, good evening. My name is Ray Schenkel. I'm with the inside team, working closely and representing Tower North and Verizon Wireless. And we are here seeking, as the mayor said, a special use and amendment to the PUD to allow a stealth wireless communications facility at the Oscar Swan property. I do not plan on bringing up any new material, but I did feel it was important to highlight some of the items in the application and some of the things that came up at the hearing, and then I can answer any questions you have. I'm also joined by Jesse McDaniel. He's the Verizon engineer who provided the RFF affidavit and the testimony at the hearing. I also have Mark Vassada. He's in here. He's here. He works closely with Ari, but Ari was sick and couldn't attend. And we also have Mark Lane, who submitted the application and the real estate analysis. And then finally, we have Angie Fry, who is the Verizon attorney. I seem to have trouble getting the... Oh, there we go.
Have you all said you're good? Otherwise...
Otherwise, help is on its way.
I think there we go. Okay, great. Thank you. So, as we discussed, I know you're familiar with these types of applications and facilities. I know you read through the project report, and I know you watched the video. But some of the things that we talked about at the hearing is how Verizon is here to keep up with the insatiable demand that we all have for seamless wireless coverage, and how reliable everybody probably in this room has come with these smartphones and all the things that they do. We talked about how important it is to have a robust and seamless wireless network for the community, especially in light of what has happened, the recent tragedies in the Chicagoland area. We talked about how over 80% of 911 calls are made from wireless devices, and how the number-one reason people cite for purchasing phones for the elderly and for their children is for their safety, so that they can track them, they can reach them, and they can make calls. So with over half of these users cutting their landlines, this is their only form of communication. It's extremely important for Verizon to keep up with this demand. They're the number-one carrier in the country, and they take that very seriously. Jesse McDaniel is one of many RF engineers that monitors the network every single day, works with their sales and marketing team to find out where there's troubled areas. We have a detailed RFF affidavit and testimony explaining why we need this site in this location, explaining that the existing sites that surround it are maxed out with capacity, and there is a coverage deficiency that is only going to get worse over time. And this precision of this site is extremely important to cover all these areas listed here, Route 38, Randall Road, Geneva Commons, and all the surrounding residential business areas. We talked about the search ring that was provided. This depicts the coverage, and you can see the difference in the color. It's a propagation tool to show how the coverage is different in the area, with the yellow and the tan being poor coverage, and how the search ring is a guide for someone like myself or Mark to give an area that they need a new site in this area in order to offload the surrounding sites. We go to the center of that search ring and work like a corkscrew and work around to find a site that not only that we have an interested landlord, meets the coverage objective, but also meets the city code requiring for wireless antenna facilities. There are certain requirements that we need to meet. If we can hit all those items, now we have a viable candidate that we need to pursue. We have that with Oscar Swan, and you can see the impact it has on the network. Jesse talked about this at the hearing. He is available to answer questions. But most importantly about this site is that it hits right where we need to be, and it offloads all three sectors, hit the area, and offload where the surrounding sectors have that problem. This is the site here. It's located in a B1 zone, and it does abut residential. It is very difficult to find a site that isn't abutting residential in Geneva. There's a lot of residential zones. But what we're proposing tonight is not unusual. It's not uncommon in Geneva, and it's not uncommon in the surrounding communities. You have two water tanks with multiple carriers on them right in residential areas, abutting right up to residential with the exact same antenna facilities that we're proposing tonight. This is not unusual. I won't go through all the photo simulations, but we did do the balloon test with the crane at 100 feet, and you can see that it's very difficult to find a site that blends in as well as this. And I drove around that day for four hours, and it was very difficult to get certain angles because of the tree canopy. The wireless facility is a monopine, which is in harmony with your code as far as the stealth facility. But we think this is a great site with all the tree canopy that helps disguise the facility. So the four main objections for the planning and zoning hearing was the look of the monopine. Many of the remonstrators felt it looked terrible. But I just want to remind the council that this is the preferred stealth facility that is listed in your code. So we are only following what was preferred in your code. Now, we happen to agree that we think it does look right, but know that if we could do a standard monopole that is preferred because it's cheaper and quicker versus going to have a stealth facility made. People fear that it will be detrimental to property values. Now, none of those claims were backed by a certified appraiser. We provided an analysis in our application, but know that existing antenna facilities and tower sites that are in Geneva and the surrounding areas have not been detrimental to property values. So that's important to note. RF emissions, it was made clear by your attorney that this site will meet all the guidelines set by the FCC and match all the existing frequencies that are in Geneva and the surrounding area. And then finally was the PUD restricting SUPs on the property. The PUD dates back to 1987. In 1985, there was 340,000 wireless phones in the country. Five years later, in 1990, there was 5 million. Today, there's over 290 million. I don't think it's fair to have that PUD. It was nine years before the Telecom Act, and I don't think it's fair to have the PUD restrict something and overrule what is spelled out in the standards with the special use regarding wireless telecommunications facilities. So one thing to note before we wrap up is that, just to remind you, that Cityscape is your third-party consultant that the city hires to review wireless antenna facility special use applications. They reviewed it and agreed that it met all of the standards. Your staff reviewed how we addressed the standards regarding special use applications, and they agreed that we checked all the boxes and met all the standards. So we respectfully disagreed with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We do think this is a win-win. We think the site meets all the city code requirements for placement of new antenna facilities. We think it'll allow, we know it'll allow Verizon to meet their demand for their subscribers and provide coverage to the Geneva community and the emergency services, and we think it's a well-disguised stealth facility that will also offer colocation to other carriers. So I am here, we are here to answer any questions. I appreciate the opportunity to open up tonight, so thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ray, can I trouble you just to hit the escape button on that?
Yes, I can do that.
Or just knock the whole thing over? As promised, I will ask the council a question, and that question is very straightforward. Is it your preference to begin deliberations amongst yourselves, or do you wish to hear from residents joining us this evening before such deliberations take place? I will defer to the majority of the council. Mr. Maladra?
So first a question and then an answer to your question.
Of course.
Given your opening statement, are we allowed to question?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So my preference would be that we go first, primarily because I think you all will appreciate being informed by what you hear from us before you tell us what you've already told us through all the emails and phone calls and things. So that's my preference.
Anyone object to Mr. Maladra's preference?
My preference is the same.
Ms. Mayors as well? The chair determines that the preference is to begin deliberations by the council members first. Those deliberations can include questions of the applicant, questions of the staff, clarifications for either Mr. DeGroot, Ms. Dawkins, or city attorney, et cetera, et cetera. So with that, who would like to go first? Apparently, Mr. Maladra would, then Ms. Mayor.
I always get my stuff out of the way first, then I can just sit and listen. In your four main, you reviewed the four main objections raised at the PVC. The last one was the PUD restrictions. My question for you, my first question for you is, when did you learn about the PUD restrictions?
To be honest, it was after we sent the notice for the first hearing. The staff had realized that it was part of the property and that we needed to table the first hearing and then file the application for the PUD. So it was, that was in, I believe, God, it had to be March or April.
So in March or April, you knew that you were looking at a site that had restrictions on it. What made you think that these restrictions would be no longer applicable, aside from the fact that you want to put a cellphone tower there?
Well, we filed in December, and again, what we felt was that the PUD was back in the 80s, nine years before the Telecom Act, and it didn't account for the need for a wireless network or the need for new wireless facilities that we're proposing. So we thought that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council would see that as outdated and go by the special use standards.
But the cell tower, in terms of use type, it's not a commercial use. It's not a retail use. It's not a residential use. The closest comparison would be it's a utility use. What is it about the PUD restriction that would make anybody think a utility would be okay there now as opposed to 1987?
Because in 1987, like I said, there was 340,000 zones. Now there's 290 million. These people have grown reliant on a reliable network.
So if there was some insurmountable physical problem at that site, you hasn't behosed? You couldn't do anything?
I'm sorry.
Are you saying there is no alternative?
Well, what I'm saying is that this meets all the requirements, and we think it's a great site. It's in the area, and it checks all the boxes. If we were going to go at the Planning and Zoning Commission, people asked if we could go to the east towards Geneva Commons. And if you're going to go in Geneva Commons, now the only room to put it would be in that front parking lot. So you're talking about putting a large lease area in the middle of the parking lot. I don't even know if you could get the variance for parking, but also it would stick out like a sore thumb, and there's no room outside. Well, what I'm saying is there's no tree canopy.
One moment, Mr. Swanson. I failed to mention, but I will now since the guffaws. Let's be respectful of everyone who has the podium, irrespective of their position or perhaps some of the words they deliver, just so we can proceed with a modicum of civility. That'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What I meant was, there isn't a tree canopy to disguise the majority of the tower. You'd be out exposed in the parking lot, looking at it. There's no room back behind the Geneva Commons, and if there was, you're putting it right up against residential that you'd be doing it tonight. So we felt that this site was a better site.
Yeah, I wasn't so much interested in specific alternatives, just more in terms of how it is that this site becomes so indispensable. So my take on it is, we have a PUD that carries with it certain restrictions. The way I look at it, that was very forward-looking. It was looking at all the possible ways that Geneva could change and how things might put different pressures on us. An example, in 1987, there was no, well, I got to be careful. Maybe Amazon existed, but I doubt it was going down Allen Drive 500 times a day in 1987. So if Amazon were to come and say we wanted to put a warehouse on that site, we would still say we have PUD restrictions, sort of protecting us from that type of use in that specific location. So what I'm looking for is, what is it about what you're proposing that would say to us that that foresight that we exhibited back then is actually detrimental to Geneva? And all I'm hearing is, so you want to put a cellphone tower there. So that's why I asked if there was some physical impediment you wouldn't want to put a cellphone tower there.
It's tough to find a site that meets the city requirements and meets the coverage objective. It's very difficult to find these. So we found it. And we have testimony with the RF statement how important it is to the Verizon network. So I don't know if an Amazon warehouse is a fair comparison, knowing an Amazon warehouse is extremely large.
A lot of traffic.
And this is a much smaller footprint.
It was a stretch.
So, but I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I feel like this is more in harmony with your code than another type of industrial business use that would be proposed here.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Phew.
And then Mr. Swanson.
So you say it's in harmony with the code, and that you wouldn't, so you're stating that you knew about the special use prohibition in March?
We had filed in December. I can't remember if it was March or April, but we were moving forward with a hearing, and we had sent out the notices. And Chayton with the staff came back and said, wait a second, we have a PUD amendment. You need to file this and include this on the notice. So we did it as soon as we could, and then the next agenda we could get on was July. But you'll have to forgive me, without checking it, it might even have been latest, May or June.
You, I mean, I'm assuming that you go around and develop these towers at other locations as well. Is that right?
Correct.
So this is something that you do for business? You're a developer of the tower properties? Is that accurate?
Tower North works with Verizon. Verizon got out of the tower business there into building the network. So whenever they can't co-locate on an existing structure, they work with agents like us inside to find sites, and then they partner up with a tower company like Tower North to do it. So they're kind of driven by both parties. We work for both of them. But it's the last thing that they want to do. They want to get the network up and running, but when there is no other alternative, that's when they work with Tower North.
Okay. So, but as you go and look at properties to locate these monopines or monopoles, whichever you choose, that those are proprietary to your company, those designs, the monopole and monopine?
No. So Tower North can work with, what they normally would propose in a situation, this is just a regular monopole. But when the zoning code requires stealthing facilities, like sometimes they build a monopine or a monopalm down in Arizona or California, or they work with a stealthing company that can build that for them. It's a lot more expensive to build. They don't like to do it, but if, in order to meet the code, they'll do it, and they'll team up with a stealth company.
So you referred to it as sticking out like a sore thumb at the Commons, but here on Oscar Swan's property, it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb?
Well, again, I know it's subjective, but if you look at the photo simulations, and you can only see the top portion of the monopine, I feel that blends in well with the landscaping. I know that's subjective.
But the branches don't start until 26 feet in the air. So how, do you know many conifer trees that their branches start 26 feet up, except in maybe the north woods of Wisconsin?
I believe that tree canopy is there is 40 to 60 feet, depending on the tree. So you're going to have that blocked by the base of it. You're not going to see that base of that monopine.
Except if it's in your backyard.
Again, if you drive it over there, that's a very thick tree canopy.
I live right there. So I live within the 500-foot radius. So I walk around that neighborhood very often, and I was present for the balloon test. It was on my birthday, so I stayed home from work to witness your balloon test. So I went all the different places you could go, except for Oscar Swan, because if they decide to put this on their property, that's really their business, except for the fact that they're putting it on the furthest point of their property, the point that is closest to residential, not next to where their business use is. They're putting it closest to my neighbors' houses in their backyards. So as far as a special use goes, it's not a use that's consistent with Oscar Swan's business. It's something so repellent to them that they've put it in the furthest corner of the site, so that it's not seen by their guests, but it's in one of my neighbor's backyards, a good friend of mine. It's in another person's backyard, and they moved already. They sold their house as soon as the development page populated with this possible pine tree in their backyard with equipment around it. The people that live in the apartments nearby, I mean, they will see this every single day from their windows. So Oscar Swan's site is protected because it's shielded by the trees on that side, but these people that live in the neighborhood, that their homes are there and that were protected by the PUD that stated no special uses, are basically not being treated fairly in this case. And regardless of what the appraisals say about a quarter mile, a half mile, five miles, you know, next to a tower, by the water tower where the antenna's 200 feet in the air.
No, they're more, they're 50 feet. They're 50 to 60 feet on that water tank. I just drove by it for the meeting. I just want you to understand.
The water tower itself is 200 feet tall.
Right. Correct. Oh, yeah. That might be 150 to 200 feet tall. Correct.
So the antennas are on the top.
No, the antennas are on the leg and on the stem of the tank.
Okay. Well, that property is also surrounded by a gorgeous park facility that is our high school's, you know, athletic facility. So the property values there are buoyed by the fact that they're on a beautiful park. I mean, I think that's fair to say. But there's definitely people that are impacted very severely by this, and anyone who would say that having this device in their backyard would not affect that property's value, I just, I mean, it's not even credible to talk about it.
I would need to see the proof. With all due respect, Alderman, these are common on the landscape. And I just drove by the water tank by Geneva.
These trees, these monopines are common.
But these antenna facilities are common on landscape.
Yeah, they're common on a water tower.
Common on a water tank, and then there's towers as well. So again...
Well, I really, with all due respect, I mean, some of the things that you've said, like it's not fair that this would have been established as part of the PUD because there were not 290 million phones. I mean, this town, my father was an alderman too, and he was around during the time when that PUD would have been set up. And forward-thinking, absolutely, because we... And forward-thinking, absolutely, because we had just spent years and years and years and invested, I mean, I don't even know how much money, in burying all of our electric over the years, so that it wouldn't be an eyesore through the community. We still have areas that are, that are land-lined electric, but this neighborhood that you're going right up against, it was one of the first neighborhoods that was built with all in-ground utilities. Now you're gonna come in and say, "We're gonna broadcast radio frequency right over your homes," and with this very unnatural tree, I mean, it has seven layers of branches. I build high-rises, and we put antennas within our building to disguise them. We do DAS systems. You have other options. You represent the tower company, and I think you're here because you found a place for a tower, not because it's absolutely necessary and the only solution. You've said it's very difficult. Well, I think you're gonna have to go back and try some more, because this is not acceptable. If it was acceptable, Oscar Swan would put it right in front of their house, and that would be, it would be concealed, but it's not in front of the house. It's not even close to where they're gonna be doing their events, so let's not put it in people's backyards either. What I got?
Mr. Swanson, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Couple of questions. You mentioned in the circle, the target circle, was where you started to look, and then you went outside of that when you couldn't find anything. I was struck by the map showing the coverage if this were to be placed, and in that, it seemed to me that the Geneva Commons did not improve significantly. So, so my question is, is this in fact achieving one of your main stated goals, which was State Street, Randall Road, and Geneva Commons? So, in, in looking at the map, Geneva Commons remains light blue instead of the purple. So, does that mean that another one is going to have to go in to the west? Or, where, where do we end up if we put this in?
I'm gonna defer, I'm gonna ask Jesse to get up and explain how this site, how this site meets the objective. Since he is the RF engineer, he, he did provide the affidavit and testimony, but I'm gonna ask him to get up and explain why this is so important to him, so.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Name is Jesse McDaniel, I'm RF engineer with Verizon Wireless. And I guess to answer your question, so this site is very important to our, in terms of our network, because it has two objectives, coverage, it's a gap in coverage, and with this site where it's located, it will close that gap and also become a dominant server in the area, right? And also offload the sectors that we need, you know, immediate relief because they hit capacity. To answer your question, as far as the Geneva Commons, you see, you do see that there is light blue coverage in the area, so it will become the dominant server. So as far as the coverage that we need in that area, that this site will hit that objective and also carry the traffic that we need it to carry.
Well, it seemed like most of the Geneva Commons was in the light blue before. I mean, there was a little bit of green on the map. It, to me, just looking at the map, it doesn't look significantly improved from before and after.
Yeah, well, based on our analysis, it will, it will be the dominant server in that, that location, so.
Just to clarify, I just want to ask Jesse to leave him in the question. The map is just to help, it's a guide to show, it's not specific, it's not as detailed as the actual coverage. It's the, the narrative that you provided in the affidavit and in your testimony, that how Oscar Swan meets it, we shouldn't, the guy, the map isn't carved in stone, correct?
That's correct.
So, it's just a guide to help show as a tool that there's the gap, but it shouldn't be as specific as yellow and blue in those, those instances.
Okay, I typically like my guides to be fairly accurate when I'm looking at it to make a decision, so.
That's why we provided the narrative on top.
I, okay, that doesn't make me feel super comfortable, but, okay, I, I will take it. I will move on to my next question, and, and that is, in your presentation earlier, you stated that it's not uncommon for this type of tower to abut residential, particularly in the Chicago area or Geneva. Yet, when I look at the information you provided us on home values, you gave us four examples, of which none of them appear to be anywhere near residential, or, in fact, they're more near cornfields. And so if it's not uncommon to abut residential, why was it difficult to provide us with detailed information on property values? If it's happening all the time, we should be able to see that. So, so that was a, a red flag for me, to see that. I, I did look at the presentation earlier, and the appraiser said he wanted something in Geneva. However, none of these are in Geneva, and we don't have a lot of cornfields in Geneva. So, so that, to me, seemed to be a flaw, and, and I'd like to hear why there were not other examples available.
Mark, would you like to get up and explain some of your analysis? Mark Lane is the applicant, we worked together in Insight. He submitted the analysis and the application, so maybe he could explain his mind thinking.
Good evening, Mr. Lane.
Good evening, how are you? So, the objective, and what we were trying to accomplish, was to look at, I was trying to look at some sort of data that, that would indicate some sort of differential in, in property values versus, for homes, properties, you know, most proximate, most proximate to the tower, and then properties as you, as you got farther away from the tower, to see if there was any, any measurable difference. And, you know, the problem you run into in Geneva, obviously, there aren't really any towers in the town, except the water tank near the high school. I did subsequently do a test of, of the sales prices around that water tank, and there was no appreciable difference, you know, closer, closer to the tank and getting farther away from the tank. So, if, if that was an indication of the impact of antennas, just the antennas, I, I didn't see anything there. If the impact was attributable to something visual, like the appearance of the tower, you know, and, and these other towers are actual standard monopine towers, or monopole towers, excuse me, there, there aren't really any in, in Geneva in residential areas. So what I tried to do is find towers that were proximate, and then as, as I expanded in circumference out from the, out from the, the tower location, I was starting to capture residential properties. You know, when we're doing statistical analysis, we need some sort of, of quantity of data to make some sort of a reasonable inference from the data, and that was the only way I could figure out how to do it. Now, that being said, I have, I also did a study similar, very similar to this, in, in Willmette, Illinois, where the tower is right in the middle of a residential subdivision, an established residential subdivision, and I, I found the same results. The, the homes in the immediate surrounding neighborhood right around the tower, as you expanded out from that tower, there were no, there was no difference in property values. In fact, the homes closest to the tower were actually incrementally more valuable than the houses as we got away from the tower. So, I've done quite a few of these studies in, in, you know, numerous areas, and I, I always seem to come up with about the same result, it's, it's no impact.
So, you could have included more applicable to this site from a different community?
From a different community. I, I was asked to try to, to try to show a, a local impact, so I did try to stay near or proximate to Geneva, because that was what I was asked to do. But, yeah, I, I do have examples outside of this area that, that confirm what I presented in, in this report.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, it doesn't matter to me that if it's in Geneva or Batavia, St. Charles, what matters to me is that what happens when you have a cell tower 50 feet from your backyard?
Sure.
And that's the question that needs to be answered, not that it's Geneva-centric.
Sure.
And, and I'm not sure that I have the data now to make that conclusion. So, just looking at these four samples, quick looking at Google Maps, the Kesslinger and Brundage, it appears that there's one home 640 feet away. You go to McKee, it's maybe three homes 600 feet away. You go to Randall and Cleason, it appears that there are two, two homes, one east, one west. Kirk and Geezy, four homes, and they're across Kirk Road, and they're about 500 feet away. So, so they're very different than this one, where it's literally 150 feet from a yard. So, so I don't think we have apples and apples to look at, so. That, that makes me uncomfortable on the property value side.
Okay.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Caven, sir.
Thank you. I know that you kind of talked about or cited the fact that, you know, that, that PUD was put together in 1987, and there was a lot less cellphones, obviously, than there are currently, so maybe, I was getting the impression you were taking that as that was either, you know, not forward-thinking or not, or not knowing exactly what things would be like in the current state, but at the same time, those things were put in there to make sure that there were no special uses in there moving forward, and I think a lot of the residents who live over there have expected that to remain the same. And to my knowledge, since 1987, there have not been any special uses granted for any reason, which is sort of what that was written for. So I just wanted to point out that they may be, and obviously, they weren't thinking specifically about cell towers, so I don't think it's that, you know, you're being unfairly, you know, treated poorly. This is the way that anybody who's wanted to do anything there has been, so I think that that's fair to, fair to point out. In talking about the PUD amendment, I know you said that maybe it was May or maybe it was June, when you determined, or you determined with the city, but with you developing these and, and doing this regularly, whose responsibility is it to know what forms or requests are going to be needed for a specific project?
I believe the applicant of the city when we filed, they, right, it should come up in the title and we should know about it. So, yes, it was probably a miss on both parts, but, again, with the reason that we talked about earlier, we felt it was worth amending and including that, because we felt that this, you know, the special use standards tied to wireless facilities and the federal law would, would override that.
Well, and if you didn't file that amendment, then we wouldn't be here having the discussion though either, right? I mean, you didn't have a choice to file that amendment or not file the amendment.
Oh, correct, right. We, to move forward with special use, otherwise, if we went through the special use and got approved, it wouldn't have been viable, because we missed the PUD amendment, right?
Okay. And I know this has sort of been talked about already, but, and I certainly agree with this, for the special use standards, specifically, Use Standard 2, the proposed building or use will not diminish the value of adjacent and nearby properties, and I know we just had the real estate professional or appraiser up here to, to give some information as well, but for some of these homes, when it's, you know, 70 feet, 200 feet, and you know what? Maybe that isn't more than 15 or 20 or 30 homes that are really all that close, but I don't think there's any way, I don't feel like there's any way that you can say that those homes that are specifically right there, somebody who's a mile away, I don't know if that winds up having, making a big difference or not, but I think that it's difficult. I find it difficult to believe that somebody whose backyard is, is right there and that tower is 70 feet away, that they're not gonna suffer some type of financial impact. And if that's exactly what Special Use Standard Number 2 says, I don't think that, I don't think that this request meets the intended, the intent of, of what that Special Use Number 2 is. So, I think that that is all I have at the moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kosarog, then Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question that was coming to me a lot while I was listening to the PCC meeting, and you referred to it again in your presentation tonight, and that's 911 calls, how important they are. Certainly agree with that, but from a technical point of view, how are 911 calls handled? Are they prioritized, or do they just go in the queue with the same guy who's talking about as auto warranty?
I'm gonna defer to Jesse on this, since he's a reader for your engineer. Jesse, do you mind getting up and speaking about that?
All right, can you repeat the question, please?
My question is, are 911 calls prioritized on the cellular network, or do they just go in a queue and could be dropped like any other phone call?
To answer your question, they are prioritized, but if, for some reason, the site is at capacity, there, there will be some blocking of calls, right?
Some blocking of 911 calls? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
It's, it's possibility. It happened in the recent event that happened up north, right? We did have some blocking of calls because there wasn't enough capacity, and then also coverage, right? If you don't have adequate coverage in a certain location, those 911 calls can be in jeopardy, right, of going through, so. But they are prioritized.
Is there, how, you'd see, it seems like you guys would want to know how often a 911 call doesn't come through, or gets dropped, or things like that. Do you have any information on that?
No, I don't have the statistics on it.
I just think it's, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I, I just think it's a little frustrating to hear you use those emotional sort of contexts there, talking about elderly people having cellphones and things like that, when, you know, we know that 911 calls are prioritized, and that's really not an issue here that is gonna make a difference probably with the new tower. I, I was also concerned about the, the Geneva Commons coverage, as Alderman Swanson said, and, you know, I just wanted to, to echo what everybody else is saying about the, the PUD and how it was forward-thinking. You're saying it's not fair because it was before the Telecom Act, I, I just don't understand that. I think it protected all these residents, the value of their property, made them comfortable in investing in Geneva, you know. I think this is exactly, exactly what it was meant to do, even if they didn't have the foresight to know that cellular was gonna be 2.9 million phones. I did have a question about the appraisal, and I, I'll just ask it to you, maybe you know, before we bring up Mr. Lane, but are, are the appraisals taking over time? You know, so, for example, Mr. Lane said some of the properties went up in value as they got closer to the tower. Was that within the last year or two, when the market was up? Are we looking at some historical data here? Or how does that work? How, how are we not capturing, how do we know we're not capturing just an uptick in the market that really is unrelated to any cellular tower?
Mark, I'm gonna have to defer to you. I mean, my feeling is that property values have been increasing over time, but I'll let Mark, he submitted the report, so.
Sure. Yeah, that's a really good question, but the, the, the data that I polled was before, before the uptick in the market, and I went back, I believe it was 18 months prior to the, to the date that I, that I pulled the data, so we were capturing, you know, you know, pre-increase in market, and all the data that we, that I polled would have been subject to the same market condition, so, yeah, markets do go up and down, but the, the sample would have all been relative to each other, if that makes sense?
I guess just that, I, I do understand what you're saying with them all, all being in, but I say, I guess it really comes to mind when you say, "Well, some of them increased in value as you got closer to the tower." Well, it seems to me that could have been a lot of factors, you know, that they or may not have included the impact of the tower on the property. Maybe they would have increased more without the tower, maybe other properties, just, there's other things that could have happened here, or no, is that accounted for in your calculations?
Well, so, I guess the assumption would be that, that, that if the tower was causing an impact, the, the properties closest to the tower would, would, would bear, would bear that out, right? They would, they would, you would see some sort of indication that, that those, that those homes closest were, were selling at, at a price below homes that were farther and farther away. Some of the, that granularity that you're asking for, I, I don't know how you would really measure that. that. I don't know that you can erase, I mean, if you standardized the data and removed any percentage increases or decreases attributable to market conditions, you should still see the differential based on spacing, I would think.
Okay. I guess my last question, maybe for staff, maybe it's not relevant, but in reading the consultant report, I guess, I was just wondering if the PCC amendments included enough of their recommendations, such as antenna socks, maintenance of the branches, decommissioning and things like that. Has that, maybe you can just answer before we call up Director DeGru.
That's a good question. You know, city staff can attest to this, that these sites are maintained and upgraded several times over the life of the agreement. And a lot of times, you know, for example, there's landscaping requirements in order to get it approved, and sometimes that landscaping gets windburned or dies. And when the applicant comes back in to file for replacing a cabinet or an antenna, that's when the city says, also, your requirement was to have this landscaping, we'd like you to fix that. And the applicant, that's part of the building permit review process, and that's when they catch up and clean that.
I wasn't really referring to the landscaping itself, I was more referring to the faux branches and things like that.
Right, but I guess, what I meant was, that could be part of the requirement to say, hey, you need to check in every however many years to make sure that the tree, the aesthetic integrity of the tower is still intact, and what, you know, and we could have that be part of the building permit, that they maintain that and keep that, the integrity of the stealth facility, meaning that, whatever, let's say the pines fade because of the sun or whatever the case is.
Where a storm comes by and knocks them off.
Correct. Oh, that, no, there's a requirement for that, yeah.
Stuff like that.
Absolutely, they just need to be notified, they have thousands of sites, if they're notified, hey, you're in violation of your building permit or zoning approval, we need you to come in, then they'll have to do it. Absolutely. That's what I would recommend, that's how they do it with the other sites. You know, for example, a rooftop site, if they have a stealth panel in front of it and it's damaged or whatever the case is, then the city notifies them that it's not in compliance and they have to fix it. And a lot of times, they're, once the site is built, there's a cell technician out there one to three times a month, they'll notice if something's wrong and they'll take care of it, but if not, if the city notifies the appropriate parties, they'll be required to maintain it.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Mr. Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to start by saying I do believe the state at need for this in terms of coverage. I don't think you'd go through that, such an effort to, for a tower you didn't need. That being said, the faux pine is, you said you would prefer just a standard monopole. The concealed monopoles, can, do they have the capacity for co-locating also?
When you say concealed, like the flagpole?
Yeah, like a flagpole.
No, they really don't. They, I've done a number of flagpoles, and the problem is, the antennas, you have an array of antennas that stick out, right? And those antennas sometimes can be six to seven feet panel and a foot and a half wide. If you're now going from six to nine antennas, to now three, because you have to have them wrapped around a pole and have to have them a smaller size, that hurts the capacity, right? So now the only way that Jesse can get it, to get six antennas, he has to stack them. So instead of going, having six with a full array at 95, he has to go three at 95, and those antennas are smaller, and then put them below three at 85. And so you start to go down, and now it really becomes a single carrier pole. But I agree with you on the monopole, it's a slicker style, but again, it's subjective, so.
Okay, so that answers that. I want to ask another question, but I would defer to council, if you can, if I ask the question that's out of order for what we can ask, if you can just let me know. I know there's basically an open cornfield across the street, the property across 38, was that considered?
So when you look at what Jesse states in his affidavit and his testimony, is that the sites surrounding it, the sectors, you have three sectors facing typically 0 degrees, 120, 240, right? Those sectors facing Oscar Swan are getting hammered. So what you really ideally want is to put antennas, an array of antennas in that sector so all three of those sectors offload that traffic. When you move it to the west, now you only have one sector facing that.
Well, it's actually, it's northwest, northeast.
Northwest, so you'd have, or excuse me, did you say northeast or?
It's just across the street.
Almost literally.
Across Route 38?
Yes. There's a cornfield.
Yeah, I'd have to look at, I don't know what, maybe, Mark, I don't know if you searched that area, you have to meet, I don't know about that candidate.
It would involve a different city council.
Oh, it's St. Charles. Okay, I understand.
That's not the reason I bring it up.
No, I understand, so it's St. Charles. I know that we, I know that Mark would have looked at anything and everything possible, and there has to be a reason, maybe he couldn't, they couldn't come to terms with that landlord. We can't force people to lease to us, so maybe that was the reason for that.
And the, probably the biggest bugaboo with me is listening to the description of the property values and the increasing radius, and what I didn't see is a radius, and I understand it would be difficult to do, a 600-foot radius, because as has been said here, I think there's a big difference between being able to throw a stone at it and seeing the top of it from a distance. I have, you know, my duty to those residents back there comes into play. So now, back to the PUD, when you identified the site, did you run a title search regarding the underlying real estate?
Yes, they must have, yes.
Okay. If so...
Just to clarify, with respect, your response was, "they must have." Do we know for certain whether it was done?
Verizon, they did, they did. Title search was done, yes, I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and why again then did it take till mid-June to file a petition to amend the PUD?
When we filed in December, we had a number of revisions per the staff, and then it wasn't caught by either party, the staff or Verizon, until we had sent notice of the public hearing. That's when Chayton said, by the way, there's a PUD on here, we have to amend this. So that's what happened.
It seems like that falls to you. If I wanted to build a hog slaughtering, I would, I would look at the property and know that I need to see what the restrictions are there. I think I've, that's it for now. Thanks.
Forgive me for the interruption, but I'd just been advised that there is a vehicle outside with their lights still on. It is a, for what it's worth, a Cadillac, so if anyone's driving a Cadillac and the lights are on, we do not provide jumps, it's normally city council proceedings, but if you're the vehicle, just a heads up. That was actually from the passenger inside the car, so, no, I'm just kidding. Mr. Kilburg, sir, floor is yours.
I'll be brief. This is a development on the other side of town. I actually live in the Third Ward and live on the east side of Geneva, and actually, I have a cell tower on top of a water tower within 300 feet of my home. And again, I don't think we're comparing apples to apples here, because a water tower and its aesthetics are completely different than a standalone cell tower, I believe, and there's not too many times I look up like this to see if the cell towers or the cell service is still located there, but I think that Alderman Caven and Alderman Mayor have raised a number of the same points that I would have raised. I really don't have anything else to add, other than I really appreciate the citizen involvement on this topic. I think that all too often, as you follow these types of developments in the paper, citizen interest catches up way too late. But obviously, in this case, I think the citizens, the immediate residents that have been impacted, I think, reached out to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe probably, and as well as the city council with communication, all of it very civil. And again, I commend citizen participation, and I think that's one of the assets of our community. Our people pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the dais who has not yet spoken, asked questions, seek clarification, wish to do so, otherwise, I'm happy to recognize council members who wish to speak for a second time. Ms. Mayor?
I'm still not really clear on the PUD. You said to Alderman Bruno that we might have missed it. I mean, it is the developer's responsibility to find underlying zoning requirements on a site, it's part of the process normally, correct?
Correct. But when we did learn of it, we still moved forward with the application because we felt it was worth making the argument that it was outdated and it was more important to meet the special use standards. I know that we politely disagree in that, but, so we would have applied for that back in December or May when it was discovered.
Okay, so, all right, you did know about it, you just did not apply for it in a timely fashion, so they had to delay the meeting?
No, I would not say that. I would say that we filed, the city accepted the application, Chayton called us, said, there's a PUD, we need to amend that, we're going to table the hearing, and then, once you refile, we'll go back on the first available hearing, which was July 14th, that's what happened. But would we have filed that back in December? Absolutely, yes.
So I work on construction sites, and when I use, when I say, "we need to do this" or "we need to do that," and I mean, "you need to do that," I'm politely reminded that, you know, I'm not really doing anything, it's the people that I'm talking to that are going to. So do you think Chayton meant, "you need to do that, you need to file for a PUD amendment"?
Yes.
Okay, so you were using the global, okay. Do these towers come with more branches, or is seven layers of branches pretty much the standard?
You know, I'd have to, we'd have to discuss it with the stealth company. I know that if, we will do everything we can to meet cities' requirements, but there's certain engineering limitations, and without speaking with them or knowing the details, I can't answer that, but I can tell you that whatever, all those discussions will be disclosed, and if there are certain limitations, we'll be able to explain why, from the stealth and company.
So when you put this tower in, what kind of foundation does it have?
Well, it all depends on the geotech and, you know, whether it's just a standard, it would be either 20 to 30 feet caisson that they would put in, but again, I'm not the engineer, but from what I know of over the years, that they'll do a geotech and they'll get a foundation design based on the tower design, which would be not only the loading, but also the wind loading from the branches and the antennas.
So it's likely a caisson, though?
Again, I'm not an engineer, I'd be happy to provide engineer drawings to you.
No, I just, the reason why I'm asking is because during the planning and zoning meeting, they discussed how critical the tree coverage is to the success of this concealed antenna looking decent. And, you know, my neighbors have pointed out that, number one, during the winter, there's not as much tree coverage, and I fully agree with that, that it's primarily deciduous trees around the tower site. And number two, I just, I think, having done construction where there's large trees and a canopy, tree preservation is a difficult business, especially when you're drilling a caisson. So you bring in a caisson rig near these trees that are important to the community to be able to not see the eyesore or sore thumb in the neighborhood, and you drill a caisson right through where the root structure is for those trees, I just have to question whether or not we're really going to make it with those trees. Driving home from the train today, I saw on State Street about a, I don't know, probably a 50-foot pine tree down right next to State Street. I saw, driving to get my son some supplies, I saw in Fabian Woods in the forest preserve that there are about three dead enormous deciduous trees right now, right along the 31. So to me, the idea that the tree coverage is a permanent element that can support this concealing of the tower is really questionable, because trees die, and those are really big trees, and windstorms, all of these things, and then you drill a caisson through its roots, my God, something's going to happen, I'm sure of it. A caisson rig itself puts enough pressure onto the roots of the tree to really cause problems as well, so, anyway, that's, I think that it's important that we consider that this could be standing alone in the future. The main thing that bothers me is the fact that it doesn't look natural, even if you were to improve the aesthetic value of the tree, of the monopine, the branches won't move in the wind, you know, people pick up on that almost immediately when you're looking at nature and it moves in a certain way, and then you get this monopine and it's rigid and it's stuck in place. It's never going to look real, it's never going to be authentic. That's all I got for now.
Anyone else on the dais? Mr. Marx?
Who chose the monopine over one of the other type of antennas?
It's listed in your code as the number one preferred option.
It is. Those monopines do not really hide all those antennas. I mean, I saw it down in St. Louis when, we were looking at another one before, and I was down in St. Louis, so I went and took pictures, I mean, you can see those antennas.
From what I've seen, from what I know, the antennas are painted green to blend in and match. I don't know which, I know that they've made a lot of advancements in these stealth technologies, so I don't know when the one you saw.
The one I was by was by the fire station, I can't remember the name of the city, right behind a fire station.
Right, but I don't know when that was built.
Okay, yeah.
So what I'm saying, it could have been built 10 or 15 years ago, and these companies have, you know, made a lot of advances in what they can design and build. I know it's becoming more and more common as they get into residential areas, as the codes, you know, call out for it, but the antennas are painted to match, it doesn't completely engulf and hide the antennas, you're going to have the branches and the antennas inside, if you're looking, you're going to see it, sure.
So does that, and I guess, for lack of a better word, the flagpole, do those hold the same amount of antennas?
No, so the flagpole is limited because, you know, you want to, you don't want it to be too thick that it looks like a rocket, right? So you want to have it, a thinner monopole to closely resemble as best you can as a flagpole, but the smaller you go, the smaller antennas and the less antennas that you can squeeze in there. So it would basically kill the opportunity for co-location, and it would also limit the coverage and the amount of antennas that Verizon...
It cuts down the amount of coverage.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Because I mean, most of those antennas, really.
Instead of having a full array at 95 feet, you'd have to stack them right here and right here and go on... right here and go on and so forth. And then they're also limited to the type of antennas they can put up there because it has to fit inside the flagpole. So it really... It's not viable. And it's not something that we propose anymore because it just doesn't keep up with current technologies. There was something that they proposed in the past, but they're shying away from. In fact, a lot of times, they're asking to replace the monopoles. I was involved in a site at the Schaumburg Golf Course where it was a flagpole, a lightpole. But they just couldn't provide the coverage that they wanted. So we went back through zoning and modified it to a full antenna array. And Schaumburg was open to it because they were used to the site by then, and they wanted the coverage.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to... Because it was always my understanding that those antennas really picked up from the ground, not from the air. So that's why I was asking how much of the coverage. I mean, normally, a cellphone is going to pick up from the ground area, not really from an airplane. So it just cuts down the circle of what it will cover.
It's all line of sight, so the higher you go, the more that will cover.
So the lowest one ends up coming down, what, about 50 to 50 feet? The tightest?
Well, you would all... It just would... You'd stack, let's say, so you'd have three antennas at 95, then you have to have a separation, so then you go down to 85.
Okay.
And then... But remember, you're only getting three antennas in there. So that's a different type of antenna. It's a different type of coverage. Where you have one antenna facing one sector. So it's this way... If you have the full array, you can have a maximum of four antennas facing at 95 feet in three different directions. And that's so much better for capacity and coverage.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just clarification. I appreciate it.
Sure. You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm happy to recognize Mr. Marx for a second time unless someone who has not yet spoken for the first time wishes to do so. Oh, I'm sorry. Good Lord. I'm happy to recognize anybody who has a dress shirt on for the second time. Mr. Maladra, the floor is yours.
All right. So we've made... We've talked a lot about the pole itself. So I have a question about the facility. I call it a compound. So you're putting this facility behind a chain-link fence with inserts. Does the type of pole change the footprint of the facility at all?
No.
The requirements of the facility at all? Okay. So this is mostly for my partners on the council, but whatever the pole is, no matter how you look at that pole, what we're looking at on this site is a utility use and a site that's not zoned for a utility use on a parcel that's got prohibitions against special uses. We do a great job, like with our electric substations. We've got brick walls and everything. But you drive by and you still know it's not a playground. It's not a place you want to, you know, go have a picnic. It's a utility. And I think that that's another part of where I trip up over what we're talking here is, you know, the pole is what the pole is. I actually think the monopine thing is kind of clever. But however you cut it, down at the ground, in their backyards, you have a utility, maybe similar to an electric utility or something like that.
Correct. You have equipment... What did you want me to comment on?
No, it wasn't questions.
Okay.
Anyone else on the dais? I have a, if the council would indulge me, a couple of follow-up questions, if I may.
Yes.
And I'd like to ask Mr. DeGroot to please join us at the podium with Mr. Schenkel while I ask these questions. So bear with me. First question is this, and it's a clarifying question, but it is my understanding that the petitioner is responsible for pulling the title. Is that correct, Mr. Schenkel?
Yeah, we pull our title. We pull our own title. I don't know if a title is required with the application, though, is it? It's not. So we have our title for our own...
Tower North pulled the title on this particular parcel of land?
Yes.
Did you pull that title prior to filing the petition with the city of Geneva? Or did you pull the title after filing the petition?
That would have been prior.
Prior to. And when you pulled that title prior to, there was no notification, no knowledge of, no reference to special use with respect to the PUD?
God forgive me, I was not reviewing that personally. So I'd have to defer to the team if and when they did. And I don't know if the right people are here to answer that. So I apologize.
Just to clarify, is there anyone here who could answer that? If the answer is no, that's fine. I was just curious.
The answer is no.
You referenced that Mr. True, Chayton True, contacted you about some things missing in the application. Is that a fair statement?
When we filed December 2nd, he reviewed it, came back asking us to make changes, whether that was to the landscape plan, different items with the design. We addressed those and then refiled. So we basically... He reviewed the application and wanted us to make certain changes. And again, to the landscape plan or addressing this or addressing that. So we complied, asked the any firm to make those changes to landscape plan and clarify what trees or brushes we were taking out, things like that.
Okay. Was there any reference to recognition that there was a PUD in place that did not allow for special uses? And if, in fact, there was, my gut tells me that that would have also caused some sort of delay in terms of having to refile with the special use request?
So Chayton told me verbally that they did catch that when we originally filed. But during the process of making the changes that they requested, when we refiled, completed the balloon test, and everything was accepted, then we moved forward with a notice, Chayton said, "Wait a second. We forgot about the PUD." Now, I didn't know it at the time. Mark was the one who filed it. But he did... He told me over the phone, you know, "Actually, I did catch this when we originally filed, but it hasn't been discussed since." So it was then, when we had sent the notice, said, "Look, we're just going to table it. We want you to submit a PUD application with that, and then we'll put you on the next available agenda." So we complied.
I want to be very clear and respectful, of course, but...
And again, it's hard for me to reference because I know there was emails back and forth with this.
Right. But I want to pick up on something you said. You referenced that, quote, "Chayton also missed this." But is not the responsibility of...
Right. I'm not blaming Chayton. Please understand. I don't mean to do that.
So is it fair to say that the omission was and is owned by True North?
I think that...
I'm sorry, Tower North.
Yeah.
Anybody working with True North, I apologize.
I think that when we filed in December and we were working with the city, I think we should... Yes, we should have... Again, I... Mark Lane and the team filed the application. Ari and the law firm was involved in that and the back and forth. And it was, again, when I came in, when they notified, when we sent out the notice of the hearing, that's when we said... They said, "Wait a second." We just realized, as they were preparing their staff report, that the PUD was not addressed. So they asked us to complete that application and pick up where we left off. I can tell you that the staff did not seem concerned with the PUD amendment. And looking at it and knowing what we were applying for, we were not concerned either.
Mr. DeGroot, is there anything you want to add, clarify, correct, amend?
I mean, just in terms of timeframe, that PUD application was June 23rd. I believe we received the digital copy, and we got the checks the following Monday, I think.
The PUD application for the special use was officially filed on June the 23rd?
Check my calendars to make sure I got my dates right.
Earlier in the evening, comments were made. Maybe it was March, maybe it was April.
No, I'm sorry. It would have been... It was a Friday, so that was June 24th. And then we received the checks that went with the application on the 27th.
And when you refer to checks, you're talking about the costs associated with filing.
Right. So duly filed on the 27th.
June 24th, 2022. Anything else, Mr. DeGroot? From the dais again, anyone? Any questions, clarifications, curiosities for either the petitioner or Mr. DeGroot, city attorney, city administrator? Thank you both very much. Members of the council, what say you regarding continued deliberations? Is there anything material you'd like to ask here about Mr. Maladra?
So this is out there a little bit, but I would propose we call the question. I don't know if you think that's premature, but I think I get a sense of...
Let me allow the city attorney to address what I call the question is. A call the question is...
So a call the question is, if it's... So when you call the question, it closes debate. And so that means that then you would... We'd move to a vote immediately, assuming that the call is seconded. And then you would move to a vote immediately on the matter before the council.
One moment, Mr. Maladra. We're going to double-check something.
Yeah, it's a vote to call the question, but we can comment. We can comment. Then we can comment. I'm calling the question first, though, right? We can discuss.
Ladies and gentlemen, if a motion to call the question is seconded, the first vote taken by the council is a vote on calling of the question. That vote requires two-thirds of the council members present to vote in the affirmative, which means seven of the nine present would have to vote in the affirmative to call the question. If that vote is achieved, then we go immediately into a vote on the matter before us. There was a motion by Alderman Maladra to call the question. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
You can give it to Swanson.
Mr. Swanson makes the second. On the floor now is the motion as offered to call the questions. There's a question by Ms. Mayor on this matter?
On this matter.
Of calling the question.
It's not a question.
There's no debate.
There's no debate. It's just a vote.
It's just a vote. It's simply a vote. The debate has been arrested. There is no additional discussion. This is simply on calling the question.
To be clear, there's no debate on calling the question.
Got it. So with that, Madam Clerk, when you are ready, please take the...
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Clarification, because we have an Alderman absent this evening, what constitutes a two-thirds majority? Could... Just so we have clarification on that, please.
We also have Mr. Sandek. We will confirm that for you in a moment.
I think it's two-thirds of the people that are present and voting. But... And I'm getting a nod from Ron, but it's two-thirds of the people that are present and voting.
And that includes the mayor or does not include the mayor?
It doesn't include the mayor.
It does?
It does not.
That's my thought. Thank you.
Yes.
And for clarification purposes, two-thirds of nine is?
I hope the letters are out.
Proud Geneva High School graduate, 1982. We're not perfect. There's a motion, there's a second to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question will indicate by saying aye. Those who are opposed will say nay. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Nay.
Ruby? Oh, sorry. Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
And the tally is, Madam Clerk?
Tally is two no's and seven yeses.
There are seven in the affirmative to call the question. There are two in the negative. The vote stands to call the question. We move into the vote. Everyone's prepared?
Let's clarify.
Yes.
This one is written in... I just want to confirm, this is written in the affirmative so that a nay vote is not looking for the tower. An aye vote is the tower goes in.
Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Caven is correct. Most motions, in fact, virtually all motions, as you heard earlier in the meeting, are provided and brought to the floor in the affirmative. So we are voting on to allow for the special use and, of course, amending... Excuse me, amending the BlackBerry Plan Unit Development and approving a special use for a wireless communication facility at 1800 West State Street. Aye vote means you support that recommendation. A nay vote means you do not. A simple majority is required. Any other questions? Which is, of course, six votes. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll. No, it automatically goes to a vote. We do not... We have a motion on the floor already, offered at the beginning of the meeting.
Bruno?
Nay.
Berghardt?
Nay.
Caven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kocarog?
Nay.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marx?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Swanson?
Nay.
The final vote is zero aye votes, nine nay votes, one absent. The matter has been defeated. Moving on to the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we are at item... Item pause for a moment. This is the time in the meeting for public comment and new business. Is there anyone here tonight with any public comment they'd like to share with the council and the tens of millions of people tuning in? From the dais, any new business? Ladies and gentlemen, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss pending litigation before the city of Geneva. There's a motion by Kocarog. There's a second by Marx. A roll call vote is in order to go into closed session. Madam Clerk, please take the roll. No action will be taken concluding or at the conclusion of the closed session.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
We've been approved to go to closed session with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We're going to turn these microphones off for just a moment. We kindly ask, with all due respect, to clear the chamber. Mr. Miller, return the cup. Okay. Motion to return to open session is in order. Is there such a motion? Mr. Marx makes that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bruno. A roll call vote would be in order to return to open session. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Berghardt?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
We're back in open session, ladies and gentlemen. Any new business? Anything last minute?